I'd like to call the study session for September 26th to order. And City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
With the exception of Mayor Tim Rosansky and Councilmember Nichols, all council members are present.
Thank you. Do we have any clarifications of items on the consent calendar? Councilmember Curry, do you have anything?
No.
Councilmember Salage.
Yes, two. Item number three, the Marine Charter Parking Regulations. I had a long conversation with Patty Temple on this today, and I do have some concerns. I think these off-site parking arrangements are, they're as land-based as much as they are water-based, and I'd like the staff to take a look at having some kind of process in what they do on this that the Planning Department is plugged into it somehow so that we're reviewing these off-site agreements with all of the off-site parking agreements we have with other businesses in town. I've had observations that I believe would lead me to conclude that in certain situations that some of these charters are using parking lots that we have already given off-site parking arrangements to restaurants for, so I think we need to make sure we have some kind of a process that we have proper oversight and review of these off-site parking agreements when we do it. And then the other thing I'd like to see is that, I guess after talking to Patty, I don't have a problem right now with the Harbor Resources issuing the permit, but I'd like to see if there's any kind of an appeal process on the off-site parking issue that it go through the Planning Commission and not the Harbor Commission.
Now, does this mean, it sounds like to me this is significant enough that we need to discuss it and make recommendations and perhaps continue that item so that the resolution can be changed.
Well, I don't know that you need to change the resolution. I guess I'm just kind of, I don't know where else to do it, just kind of providing in some direction in how they draft the ordinance.
I would support a continuation. I have some comments on that very item.
Well, you could, you can go ahead and make the comments. This is just for initiation. The actually proposed changes are not here, so direction or comments as to how it would be drafted and those concerns.
Shouldn't we do that in an open meeting, though, rather than at the study session?
Yeah, so you might want to pull it.
We'll just pull this item and...
Okay.
And discuss it and give direction at that point in time, but you don't have to continue the initiation unless you want to.
Okay. And you had one more item, Ms. ...?
Yeah, it would be number five, the group residential facilities and large family daycare center homes. Number four, excuse me. And my, again, I had lengthy discussion with Patty Temple on this one, and my concern is over the first part of it, the group residential facilities, and maybe it's something, I don't know if anyone else has any concerns on it, but I guess my concern was just, you know, what is the nature of the problem, and is the problem big enough that we need to change the code to address it, or are existing codes address this particular, particular problem? And then also, how does it affect people that may want to rent out a room or two in their own home? So, I don't know if anyone else has any concerns on it or not.
Sounds like that that's a...
If you want to pull that item, I can respond to some of your questions or concerns as well.
Sounds like we need to pull that one also.
Okay.
Councilmember Ridgeway.
I have to focus on the two items I have.
Councilmember Daley. Thank you. I have none. So, the next item that we have on our agenda is the evaluation of the Development Review Plan and Checking Process and Planning Department Staffing. Mr. Budow, are you giving the report on that?
Actually, I'm going to let Sharon start off, and we're going to have a consultant participate with Sharon in providing the overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. The process for development review and plan checking is something that involves a number of our departments, principally planning, building, and then followed by public works, fire, general services, and utilities. And we do receive a lot of compliments from our customers on the helpfulness and friendliness of our staff, but in recent years, largely as our workload has gone up and we haven't been able to keep up, we have also been starting to receive complaints, and those focus in two areas, timeliness and interdepartmental coordination. And trying to address that, about four years ago, there was a staff task force that took a look at our processes, and they recommended and implemented a number of changes which improved things. And probably the most significant thing we all remember from that is establishing a goal of a four-week turnaround for the first review on plan check. But even with a lot of the improvements that were instituted then, we're once again falling behind on that four-week turnaround and receiving complaints again, and that is especially true in the Planning Department, which hasn't kept up staff-wise as well as the Building Department has. So, in January, the City Council authorized the retention of the firm of Hoagel Ireland to do a review of our processes, and Larry Hoagel from that firm is here to present his findings and recommendations. And the most significant ones have been summarized in your staff report, in some cases. I made some refinements to the recommendations. And when Larry is done, I would like to talk a little bit more in detail about the staffing levels for the Planning Department. Larry Hoagel is a partner in the firm of Hoagel Ireland. He is a planner, a development consultant, and a licensed engineer, and he has considerable experience in management positions for these kinds of departments. He's been a community development director, a building and safety director, city engineer, redevelopment agency director, and housing authority director, and he's done that both as in-house city staff and as a consultant. So, I think he has good background to look at this.
Maybe we could hire him to do some of the plan checking.
Well, in fact, we have, we have used that firm to help us with some of our overload work.
Make him an offer he can't refuse.
We don't, we don't need the lights off yet.
I was going to get the door closed.
Oh, the door, thank you. Thank you. So, Larry.
Okay.
Thank you, Sharon. And as Sharon indicated, I'm Larry Hoagel, partner in the firm Hoagel Ireland. With me today is Channery Ling, sitting right here in the front row. Channery participated very actively in the report, and we had another third staff person that also was involved in the report, and he isn't able to be here with us today. You know, although we're the authors of the report and the findings and recommendations, and I'm assuming that you have that before in your council packet, that I've got to say that, that our recommendations and our findings really came about through the cooperation and input from the Newport Beach Development Community. We interviewed architects, developers, permit consultants, planning consultants. Plus, we spent a lot of time with your city staff. We had a staff questionnaire that we sent out to them, a written questionnaire that we asked for suggestions and comments, and what was working, what wasn't working, and suggestions. I have to say, they came back with some very, very good suggestions. Following, following that, we spent quite a bit of time in the city, actually talking to people, the city staff, reviewing the processes, observing how things work, looking at records, and looking at permit records, and that type of thing. But, but it really, it really came, our report really is due to the cooperation of all those people involved. Now, there was one, what we, what I would say is very unusual finding, and Sharon alluded to that, mentioned it a minute ago, that we found. When we come into, come into a city, most of the time, we find that the city staff is very apprehensive of what's going to happen. They're not willing to share the information. That was not the case with your staff. They were very open, they shared information. And one surprising thing that we also found with the development community is when we interviewed the development community, they had suggestions, they had comments, but to a person, they were complimentary of the city and your staff. We said, they said, "We know there's some constraints on space and operations down there, but the people are doing the best they can, and they're just very cooperative." And that, to us, that was very, very refreshing to have that type of attitude. The report that you have on the agenda is really quite comprehensive and does a pretty good job of summarizing our report and recommendation. There's a couple of things that I would like to just briefly go through and mention, and then if you have any questions at the end, that Channery and I'd be very, very glad to talk some more and try to explain situations. In our, in our report, starting on page 35, we provided a summary of our findings and recommendations. And just, just so you understand, the way we do these types of studies, we'll take a look at an organization. And again, here, we're looking primarily at the functioning of the building, planning, and public works departments, and all the related agencies such as utility, fire, the related development case processing. But we'll come up with general findings, then based on those findings, we'll come up with specific recommendations where, where they're appropriate. There's a couple that I would like to point out to you, and the first one is one that I know is no question that you understand, there's no question that you understand. I see it in the paper, I'm not going to get into any of the political aspects of it, but you have tremendous space constraints in the building, planning, and public works department. A lot of the findings, a lot of the recommendations that we have in this report as a direct outcome or result of not having enough space to work with counter space, office space, space to have conference rooms, to roll out plans, and to work, and to work with the clientele as well as each other in the city. So, an awful lot of things you will find in our findings and recommendations are a result of the space consideration.
Got one question on that.
Yes.
Have you worked with any other cities that have been able to place, well, use technology and computers to check plans rather than bringing in the role after role of plans so that you can take advantage of some of the more modern ways of preparing plans as opposed to the old-fashioned way?
I think that you're just starting to see the forefront of that coming involved in cities. And to answer your question, as far as I think the comprehensive aspect you're talking about, no. I don't know of any city that's really allowing the developers to submit sets of plans, say a whole roll of plans for a commercial or residential building electronically, and then to, to plan check that through the whole city process electronically and return it to them. I think there's certain aspects of it that are being done in various jurisdictions. I think it's what's going to be coming around, probably happening very strongly in the next couple of years. I think it's something that, that you and we need to keep looking for and looking at and make sure that, that we're ready when, when it happens. But the answer to your question is, no, I do not.
As far as jurisdictions that may be implementing increments of that, what has been your experience with that?
I think increments of that are internal monitoring programs, I mean, not monitoring program, but internal tracking programs. Internal tracking programs are very, very, very important. Do you have, it's Permits Plus, isn't it? Permits Plus, I'm sorry. Permits Plus, as a tracking program between building, public works, and, and planning for all cases. One of the problems with most of the tracking programs nowadays is they were developed primarily for building and safety operations. They track the submittal of building plans and plan checking. They don't do a very good job of tracking projects and everything through the planning process and sometimes the public works process. There are some jurisdictions out here in Orange County that have adjusted those, those programs, developed their own internal computer programs for doing better tracking of those plans internally, and, and being able to respond back to the applicants with, with computerized printout or web access of corrections. So, yes, there are jurisdictions that are allowing, and I think you do it here at Channery, I'm going to have to turn to Channery. Channery has spent most of the time on the building department. Are we doing certain plumbing permits? Okay.
Some things are online.
Why don't you stand up to the microphone, please?
Come on, I'm sorry. This is Channery Ling, I'm sorry.
Some things are tracked electronically through Permits Plus, however, from what we've noticed and observed with Planning Department, it's, it's a little more difficult to track just because, I'd say, just from my own experience as well, planners are pretty much used to just unrolling the, the plans and redlining it right on the documents, but when it comes to public works or building, it's able to be scanned in, and then the comments are entered, but when it, when comments are directly related to the drawings, it's easier to just draw it, or, excuse me, redline it right on the document. So, it's, some of it is electronically, whereas others are on hard copy.
If I could ask. In your observation of our processes, as you know, later in today's agenda, we're going to consider a Wi-Fi application in the city, particularly so our city employees can be able to do checks and to access databases from the field as opposed to having to be in the offices. Based on your observation of the workings of the department now, would that provide for the opportunity to streamline some of the time involved in, in going through the various processes that are currently required?
I, I think it would if you had a better permit tracking and monitoring system online in the city, then that would allow you to have access remotely. As it is right now, I don't think it would be too much.
So, the two need to be put together, is what you're saying?
Absolutely.
That's correct. And based on your recommendations that are in your report, what would you estimate to be the average time savings from start to finish in terms of a permit being processed by the city were we to implement these type, these recommendations?
I, that, that's very difficult, because you're talking about averages, and there really is no average plan, you know, so I'm waffling a little bit on that. So, it could, it could vary from, from a couple of days to a couple of weeks, depend upon the complexity of the plan per application. That's correct. Right now, you have a four-week turnaround goal, a plan checking plans through both, through public works, building, and safety, and planning. Public works and building and safety is pretty much adhering to that. Planning Department, because of their staffing levels, is not able to comply with that turnaround time.
Well, a couple of weeks, we cut it in half, and a couple of days would, you know, improve it by 10, 15 percent.
I think it's possible.
But Larry, I need to make sure that I understand and the council understands what you were saying. Are you saying with a better tracking system, even without additional people in planning, that we can cut time off of the processes?
I think you could cut time, some time off the processes, yes.
Yep, but is there a better tracking system program that is out there? Should, should we be looking at modifying Permits Plus, or should we be looking at different software?
I'll be candid with you. Since we completed this report, our thoughts have changed a little bit on permit tracking systems. We're questioning right now is whether Permits Plus could be modified to really serve the needs of all the departments in the city, specifically the planning departments. We have found that there are some other agencies in Orange County, Data Point, for example, that has taken a system and modified it, and they're exceptionally happy with this ability to track it and utilize it for all, all the processes. We haven't had a chance to take a look at that. However, I have to say, one of the reasons we became, we became very much aware of the Data Point process is that the Data Point IT person just came to work for our firm, and he was briefing us, briefing us on it, so that's, that's why I have a little familiarity with, with what they, what they've done.
Okay, sorry to interrupt your, your change, but go ahead.
Oh, no, no. There's, we found, as another major finding, is really a general lack of coordination related to codes in the development review between the various three departments. I'm talking about the major departments, the planning, building, and safety, and public works and processing cases. And I think that comes about because of several reasons. Number one is the, is the space constraints that you have. Number two, it's the lack of a good tracking system. And, and three, it's the lack of adequate number of staff, to be quite candid with you, especially in the, in the planning department. I know Sharon said she was going to talk about that a little later in the presentation. But we did make a recommendation about looking at alternatives such as a community development department or a way to, to have somebody oversee that, and the City Manager's Office has made a recommendation to that, and I think you'll talk about that later. Okay, Sharon will talk about that later. One, one recommendation that we've made that we think will have a very, very strong impact upon the city, it's in, it's on page 36 of a report, it's finding G D and recommendation G six, and that's the project manager concept. Let me, let me give an example of what this means. That when a, a plan is submitted to the city for processing, let's just assume that it's a plan that goes through the planning department processing the use permit. Right now, it comes in, it's, it's given to a planner in the, in a plan department to review the plans, make the corrections. It's also routed to public works, it's routed to, to building and safety, and utilities or fire department, whoever else would have an interest in that plan. They all do their corrections, the corrections come back, and they're sent out to the applicant. We are very strong advocates of a project manager type of concept, and use that example of a plan coming into the, the planning department, this is a special use from that. When that plan is assigned to a planner to process that, and it's primarily a planning plan, that planner is responsible for making sure that the plan gets to the right departments and agencies for review. But more importantly, that planner is responsible for reviewing all the corrections from those various departments for consistency and to make sure there's no conflicts or inconsistent comments before they go back out to the developer, to the applicant. And that's extremely important. That isn't happening, that isn't happening right now. As the various departments finish the review of their plans, they are going out to the applicant, and occasionally you'll find conflicting recommendations, conflicting comments on the plans. Now, the same thing, what if it was a building, a plan that was submitted to the building department for plan checking, then that plan check engineer that was assigned to that plan would function as the project manager and make sure that all the comments from the other reviewing departments were consistent and were not in conflict before they go back out to the applicant. We think that's extremely important.
But Larry, I have a question on that, same point. I believe the way we have plan check and building check and public works check is, an applicant comes in and he actually has multiple copies of whatever it is he's submitting, and he submits one each to each department, and if there's a requirement for fire, he may even have to provide another set of plans. I want to stay focused on your point about a project manager. I don't disagree, but because of the way we actually do a distribution of plans, and I don't know that there's a communication between planning, building, and public works via a, the computer. You know, I finished my plan check today, and here's what I found, you know. Would we be better off to do like one set of plans in a central place? It's a substitute for what you're suggesting. Yours is manpower. But, you know, create a room and have a set of plans in there, and, and each person from each department come in there, review those plans, put their comments on there, so the other department or discipline has the benefit of seeing what those, those corrections are. It's a twist on what you're suggesting.
Yes.
It's a central location, and instead of multiple copies, it's maybe one or two, and then there's an oversight because each guy that comes in sees it. Is there any benefit to that, or it's, it's a little bit different than what you're suggesting, but yours is a manpower.
I think it's a very interesting concept, and I think it ought to be looked at. I think you, we have to make sure that you have a good place and space to have those plans available, unrolled, where multiple people could be reviewing multiple sets of plans at the same, at the same time. And also, probably more importantly, is to make sure that there's coordination between the departments and people are actually getting there and reviewing the plans within the timeframe that they have to, that central location. But I think it's something, I think it's, I think it's an alternative that should be looked at.
Well, that would go to a department head somehow delegating time. But here's the, the fly in the ointment, under any scenario, your project manager or a single location with one plan or two plans, each discipline will need to know, how will they be able to identify conflicts with planning when they're doing building or vice versa if they're not familiar with just broad-brush concepts? And, you know, I mean, it, it's an interesting one. I went in for a trash enclosure, and building looked at it and they said, "Oh, by the way, we don't know the setbacks from the side, so now you have to get it approved by planning," you know, so it's a fairly easy process. You just, they call a planner down, and they say, "Here's your requirements." But the building discipline knew nothing about setbacks, nothing. And so, what I'm suggesting is there is a disconnect between the disciplines, and even if you have a project manager, that disconnect continues. So, what, how do we solve that issue?
Well, there's, there's two things. We had a very, a modernized, of, mon, internal system that tracked the plans, and the person that's reviewing the plans, as soon as they're reviewing the plans, could put their comments into the system electronically, then everybody else would have access to them. I think what you're suggesting is worth looking at. I can see a couple of problems with that, is that if you, say, say the set of plans required review by public works, planning, and building, and building and safety. Well, the first one that goes in, safest building and safety, if they review the plans and make their comments, they're still not seeing the comments that planning made or public works made. The next person in...
Well, but my, my comment is, how do they know there's a conflict? Let me use the heights as a good example. We had planning and building review up there, and everything got approved. Public works never looked at it, and it had a drive cut in the front when the only entry was in the alleyway. It's a big issue. So, but the planning guys and the building guys, again, if you have a project manager, how can you have confidence that that project manager will have the ability to, to determine that conflict? That's what I'm getting at.
Well, obviously, it takes training, and it takes oversight by the department head on that. You're still dealing with individuals. There was no question about that. I think, I think that's what you're saying.
I, I think the advantage of the project manager concept is that that person would see all of the comments and corrections at the end of the process. So, in the example you cite, that person should see the driveway shown on the plan on the front and know that the city council policy says the driveway has to come off the alley, and, and understand that those things are in conflict with one another. And I think going to, to your suggestion of having one location where everyone, the different departments can come in serially, if you will, to review the plans is a little bit going back to our...
Serial planners?
Going, going back to our former system, because until the staff task force took a look at the process and instituted some changes, we used to take in one set of plans, and the plans moved around, the, the staff didn't come to the plans, and that took more time. And I think even if the plans are in one room where you're going to have to wait for each person to come in and review them, it's a trade-off. You may have greater coordination, but it's going to cost us time.
Are the corrections available online?
Not all of them, no.
Okay, so that would seem to be an increment that, that we might want to do. I mean, is that within your...
Yes, it is.
Okay.
But, but... When you say corrections online, that's fine, but are you saying that the, the plans are going to be online so that you can show the corrections? Because many times, when you try to do a verbal description of a correction where you're actually changing a geometric feature of the plans, it doesn't work too well, so that, that's why I was asking earlier if there is a way to, to look at the electronic submittal of all of our plans to where you can actually make the corrections on the plan and then have it there.
That's correct.
Well, that, that's what the lady was suggesting. I mean, you know, planning does look at the elevations. Again, our code on heights is very complex and very esoteric, and to be honest with you, I don't think you could verbalize that quite candidly. You know, it'd be difficult, so. And I know there's a suggestion in here that we redraft the code to make that simpler, but we're not on that suggestion right now.
You're not there yet.
Can I ask, Larry, can you characterize the comments from the development community in Newport Beach in terms of what they thought would be most effective towards improving the process?
There, there were comments about using electronic processing. There were comments that we should be looking at, the, the ability to submit plans like we, we just suggested electronically, and have the ability through the city systems to correct those, see corrections, and return it electronically. I don't think that, you know, like I said, I think it's, it's coming. I don't think that type of recommendation is, is quite here yet as far as the ability to do it.
Isn't one of the, the problems with that is that there is no standard electronic plan drawing software. There are architects and engineers all use a different, slightly different program to where that makes it a little bit more difficult to, to make a submittal here, because we may not necessarily have the software that's compatible with every plan preparation.
But that, that is a problem. If you implemented a system like that, and if your system had that type of constraint, then you'd have to mandate the type of software system that was being submitted. Yes. If I just go on to hit another major comment, and this is on page 37, it's G H, and this dealing with the city's 980 schedule, and this, this was covered in the Assistant City Managers... City Managers' report to you. This does create some confusion to the development community as well as the public, where we really need to go through it. People alternate Fridays off, but then some take Mondays off, and some take other days off. So there's only a couple of days a week where people can really be sure they can come to the city hall and see the plan or the plan check engineer or the public works engineer. We've suggested that you seriously look at the possibility of going to a more traditional nine-eighty plan where everybody would have the same Friday off. And in effect, either city hall or at least the development review processing operation would be shut down for those days. That's pretty traditional, and that's the way most cities do it. I'll be candid with you, I think from the development community, contractors, developers, architects, planners, they would just assume that you'd be open five days a week, forty hours, forty hours a day, but that, forty hours a day, yeah, forty hours a week, eight hours a day, but that just isn't the way things are in most cities now. Most cities are going to a traditional nine-eighty plan.
But if you do a five days a week, then you have less hours at the counter. Like right now, the advantage of the nine-eighty program is you can start at like seven-thirty in the morning and you go to five o'clock, whereas if you're on a standard five-day-a-week, you might start at eight-thirty and have to quit at four or four-thirty in order to allow work to be accomplished, so that you end up, there's some gives and takes in there.
Oh, absolutely. And that's why we recommended that you consider going to a nine-eighty plan instead of a traditional five-day-a-week.
Well, I think the genesis of the nine-eighty was the AQMD. You know, they're trying to take, instead of having ten trips in a two-week period, to have nine. But it would seem as if maybe creating more efficiencies is having just Fridays in nine-eighty is something worth considering.
But that's what we're suggesting.
I would offer a suggestion, having what I would say as a developer suffered through the suggestion that we take off every other Friday. To me, it's unacceptable. And the reason it's unacceptable today, maybe later, is the volume of work that we have. This city, again, we just finished the fiscal year last year at three hundred million in terms of either rehab or new construction. Until our volume goes down, I don't think, I think we can ill afford to cut down any of the hours at the counter. I mean, that may be contrary to what staff wants to hear. You know, we're not a normal city. I mean, there are cities around where, you know, quite candidly, their program works and the nine-eighty works, and you can get things done because they turn around things so fast. But we don't have that luxury here today. Maybe sometime in the future we will. But I submit to you, we may not, just because of the down-coast annexation and now that we're taking over everything there. I just, I don't support it. And I'm with the architects, engineers, and all the consultants.
Yeah, well, I agree with that. I think my experience, it's been the smaller cities that have smaller workloads that seem to be able to work best with being closed every other Friday. And even in those cities, I don't care for it at all. And I think it would be very difficult to do here, and I would not be in favor of that at all.
From my point of view, it's really the question and the trade-off of being inefficient on a Monday and a Friday, four days over a ten-day period, or closing one day in a ten-day period. And I think that's a difficult thing to assess, but I've certainly heard a number of complaints, including some people in the audience, that think the nine-eighty, the way we implement it, is very ineffective. And I would agree, it has some real shortcomings. We haven't experienced the taking a day off, one every two weeks, to know, you know, what that does as far as quantity of services that we provide. Other cities seem to do it. You know, I think there are a number of busy cities out there. I really find it a difficult thing to assess, because there are forty percent of the days that we are somewhat inefficient in those departments involved in the building process.
The bottom line is, we're here to serve the public, and being closed one day out of ten, I don't think serves the public. I think we just have to find a way to be efficient and serve the public. I mean, that's what we're here for, and to serve the development community certainly through the building and planning and public works departments.
What would be your thoughts if we implemented nine-eighty just on Fridays instead of Monday and Fridays?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Is it Robert De Niro?
Well, I didn't know if you're talking to Larry or myself.
No, I wanted your.
I would like us to do that. I mean, personally, I face a lot of issues on Monday and Friday that I'll be emailing a city staff member, and I don't get an email back, so I automatically assume that they're on a nine-eighty. I mean, they could be taking two weeks of leave off. But for me, there's a certain efficiency in our operation on Mondays and Fridays, and you don't know who's here and who isn't. And we have a small enough staff to where some staff have particular projects. And if they aren't there on that day, then a developer or member of the public wanting to come in and find out about that project, they're going to be ill-equipped to do so.
Well, I'd certainly support your recommendation. I don't know what the others think.
Well, Ed and I have already weighed in. I don't, and I continue not to, and for the very reason, you were talking about efficiencies. When I have an architect or an engineer or an outside consultant on public works, and they're working, they work, and those guys are working ten-hour days, some of them, by the way, and they're going into the evening trying to crank out drawings, and they may have a technical question, and then all of a sudden, and they know they want to get that drawing in by Monday, and they call, and there is nobody there. There is nobody there. I've suffered through that. So now, I lose production time on the board, I've got a guy that now has to wait for an answer. Quite candidly, it happens more than you think. And, you know, I've had many correction documents where that very scenario has occurred. I just think you create an inefficiency in the private industry based upon what you're trying to create, which you say, here is inefficiency.
So you want no nine-eighty?
No way.
Well, I guess that there's, if we were to say, get rid of the nine-eighty program altogether and go back to a five-day-a-week, you're still going to have the same number of people and same number of people-hours at the counter as you do under the nine-eighty program, except it's going to be in a shorter period of time during the day. If you were to have a nine-eighty program standard as opposed to the nine-eighty program where you have alternate people on and off, you still have the same number of people there, or hours at the counter by your staff, except that some of them, you're going to be able, every time you call up, you're going to be able to get that person, unless they're on vacation, to answer your questions. So I don't think that you get quite the same amount of inefficiencies that you do when you have somebody off and then you have to go to the person that's going to take off on Monday to make up for the guy that took off on Friday and.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, we beat this up. I'll still go back. Our workload is so heavy here, we can't justify nine-eighty at this point. Sometime in the future, maybe, but not in this city.
What is the reason for the nine-eighty schedule? Is it just popular with employees?
Well, Councilmember Dagel is correct. It started with a rule from the Air Quality Management District to reduce trips, and it was applied to employers who had a certain number of employees, which I can't remember. It is also in our Memoranda of Understanding with our employee groups, so if we wanted to eliminate that work schedule altogether, it would be a meet-and-confer item.
Just one other additional point. I think it also was embraced because, as the mayor points out, it provides for longer hours earlier, having somebody show up earlier and stay later during the day, so you have more counter time, particularly for the contractors that come in very early in the morning. The other issue, though, is that whether it's, you know, nine-eighty or whether it's a five-day-a-week, it's still forty hours. So either one of them can result in overtime with the workload that the staff has.
Let me ask Sharon, what's the process, Sharon, or Homer, for reviewing these recommendations and coming back for sort of a comprehensive city response or approach to addressing these issues, including this discussion we're just having about the work week scheduling?
We wanted to bring this study results to the city council, hear your comments, and come back with recommendations, you know, within probably a month.
Please continue with your next one. Seems like you're getting into quite a bit of discussion on each one of these.
And I'm not covering each one of the recommendations. I'm kind of picking and choosing, I think, the probably the more important ones. Yeah, the hot buttons, and I did on that one, that's for sure. Although, as pointed out in your staff report, although it wasn't our charge to take a look and make a recommendations of staffing, we did make one very tentative recommendation is that the public works and building and safety departments generally are adequately staffed. The planning department, though, appears to be understaffed, and we just made some very rough recommendations. I know that Sharon's going to talk about those more in the future. And going back to another comment that was made, it's no secret to you that your zoning codes are very complicated. They're very old provisions in the codes, and they do need to be remodeled, they need to be updated. And I understand that that will take place now that the general plan has been adopted and you move forward, hopefully, with an update of your zoning codes. But the zoning codes and the conditions they're in creates some inefficiencies for staffs, especially on the planning side and some on the building and safety side, of reviewing the plans and determining what's allowed and what's not. The high, well, the setbacks and things like that vary from neighborhood to neighborhood, the area to area, and it's very, very, very complicated. That goes into another.
Larry, on your recommendation P2, you're talking about increasing the planning staff by three positions. Does that address the issue of taking care of the backlog in the plan-checking process?
I think that was a very general recommendation. I think from the modest work that we saw and the backlog that we saw, that we felt that generally about three planning positions would be required to keep that up, to keep it going without a tremendous backlog. Be able to comply with before we turn around time, is what we're suggesting, catch up on it and comply with that.
Larry, when you make that recommendation for three people, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Thirty-eight at the top.
Okay, where would you deploy those people? Would it be strictly in plan check?
I would describe it as current planning, and that's a combination of plan check review and also processing planning development cases, just as use permits. Not advanced planning. I think that's another whole, that's another whole question, how many advanced planning projects you have going.
Larry, and coming to that conclusion, and I know it isn't a real hard recommendation, but did you take into consideration when we assumed the LCP permitting process, whether that would require any additional staffing?
I'll be candid with you, we didn't get that refined. This was just kind of, just a very, very rough estimate, and I think that this would take some little study again to refine that. We talked about the zoning codes, and of course, one area that jumps out, that takes an awful lot of staff time, are the building height provisions and zoning codes. And again, you're all aware of that. We're recommending that another study group be implemented or underway, such as you've had in the past, of architects and builders, as well as city staff, maybe other professionals, to really address that issue and to come up with some way to resolve it. We found the city of Santa Barbara has had similar type of, excuse me, county of Santa Barbara, had a similar type of problem, and they developed that envelope system, where you develop an envelope of size, then as long as the building fit within that envelope, then it would be acceptable. We're saying some sort of concept like that may be a way to go, but it really is something that needs to be addressed.
How did Santa Barbara deal with the issue of if you develop a building envelope with the, you know, demand for bigger houses in particular and more volume in the houses, that the trend is going to be to try and just fill that volume up completely so that basically, I don't know if it's a square box building envelope or what, but if you get a square box building envelope, you end up with a lot of, potentially a lot of monotonous architecture. And one of the things that our code does, it ends up giving a lot of interest in the architecture we have just because of the complexity of it.
Well, they, Santa Barbara County and City, as well as Galita, have an architectural review committee. We aren't suggesting that, but they do have a strong architectural review committee. I think it resolves that concern for them. I'm just suggesting that there are some cities that have had similar kinds of problems, or counties, and have come up with a solution, and I think it should be looked at.
Well, if you find one without an architectural committee, let us know.
I've had firsthand experience up there in the city of Galita a couple of years ago with architectural committee. I understand your comment.
It seems to me, when you look at these improvements, you know, they ebb and flow with economic conditions, although some of our residents are probably bulletproof from cyclical economic conditions. But if you look at this, it's pretty easy to want to add resources, particularly if it's fee-based, because you, you know, pays for it and our residents get our permit faster. So that's all very positive. My question to you is, in terms of these resources, you know, looking at resources that, you know, then taxpayers have to take on pension obligations and so on, permanent employees versus resources that are contract employees that we can then, you know, adjust as the economy adjusts. What's been your experience with contract planning resources? I mean, obviously, you're a contract firm.
You're asking the devil to address that. We do provide contract planning services. To be honest with you, when our firm, when I started the firm eighteen years ago, that was our major emphasis. And I have to be honest with you, through Southern California, that probably still is about forty, fifty percent of our business. And we're providing contract staffing services to about twenty-two jurisdictions throughout Southern California at this time. I think that if it's structured right, where you have adequate review and control by your in-house permanent staff, and that you're getting qualified people from the consultant, I think that it can work very well. Obviously, the advantage to using contract services for both building, planning, or public works is that you can scale it up or down depending upon the economy and as the income's coming in, as you indicated. But it can work.
How does your staff, contract staff, become familiar with twenty-two different agencies' zoning codes to where they can actually review it from the standpoint of something similar to what our staff would review it, or the various different local staffs would review?
Well, let me start out by saying that most cities' jurisdictions' zoning codes are not as complicated as those of the city of Newport Beach. That is a fact. But it takes training. It takes training. We would never take a contract staff person, and we deal in planning staff, we don't deal in public works or building and safety staff. We would not take a planning person and stick it into, just tell the person, go down to the city of Newport Beach, or Laguna Beach, or Dana Point, wherever it is, and start processing plans tomorrow. We go through, we have a training program for those people. And quite commonly, we'll put those, put them into a city, and they'll be in a training program within the city at our cost for a period of time. So, yeah, it's not easy.
So Larry, you weren't just talking about planning, I mean, in particular, you're talking about plan checkers.
Talking about plan checkers, and building and safety, it works exceptionally well. And it's very traditional to use outside plan checkers for building and safety. And there's a couple of firms around, several firms in Southern California specialize in that. It works very well. The same in public works. There's engineering firms provide those types of services. It can work at all three of the processing departments.
I guess our experience has been that it's worked better in building than it has in planning. And we did have one very good person from Hoagol Island who did plan check for us a while, and we have another person now after a gap who's doing well. But it doesn't seem to be the kind of work that that many people wish to do when they're working for a consulting firm. So finding enough of them when you need them is an issue. I think it's worked better for us in planning on the development review, the planning commission side, where we have three or four people that we use fairly regularly for major projects, one of them being David Leppo from Hoagol Ireland.
Well, I've had mixed results with outside plan checkers on planning matters, and all that I can say is when it's bad, it's really bad. And, you know, it's gone as far as working with an outside plan checker that's out of touch with what's going on in the city, invest forty, fifty thousand dollars in set of conceptual plans, and you get into the real staff, and you've got to go back and start all over again. So.
Unfortunately, that can happen, unfortunately.
What's your next item?
The last one that I'd really like to bring up is department policy and procedures manuals. These are extremely important in building and safety, public works, and planning departments. And I'd like to commend your building department. They have a very complete policy and procedures manual. They have a very complete policy and procedures manual where they outline all their decisions, administrative decisions primarily, that have been made, so all the plan checkers, all the people in the department, uh, have it. That, that is not the case in planning and public works and we strongly recommend that they immediately initiate a process to, to start developing a policy and procedures manual within each of the departments. And, and that policy and procedures manual has to be kept up to date and has to be made available on, on every staff person's desk. Now, that's all, uh, there's more recommendations in here, but that, that's as far as I was gonna go with summarizing them unless, uh, there's any more questions.
Mr. Hittrey?
Um, Larry, when you undertook this study, did you spend time at the planning department?
Oh, absolutely. We spent a lot of time at the planning department.
Well, hel- help me out, did you spend, you know, hours or did you actually maybe assign yourself for a five-day week?
Oh, no. Uh, I had a sta- I had a staff person, David Klue, that he, he was down here and I would say he spent several hours at a time talking to staff, observing processes. Uh, over the period of time, I'd have to go back and look at our time records and see how many hours he had there, but he was not assigned five, five days, five days a week, eight hours a day.
And you were looking at technical matters between these three disciplines, uh, planning, building and public works?
We were looking at, uh, technical matters and coordination between those three departments as well as internal operations within each of them.
Well, I, I, I'm treading into a, a difficult question and that is, did you observe perhaps the work ethic and culture of the planning department vis-à-vis, were they using their time efficiently and, you know, or, you know, th- those kinds of things? Did you look at that?
Uh, we observed, we observed that. We did not do a real efficiency analysis if that's, if that's what you're talking about, where we observed it. Let me say as a very, very general, uh, statement, uh, the staff and all three of the major operating departments that we looked at, and when I say major, because we did look at, you know, how, some of the operations overlapping in fire and utilities and, and those other areas, but within the three major departments, uh, everybody is working very hard, they're working very conscientiously and, uh, they're really doing the best they, they can with the resources they have and the space constraints that they have.
Is there burnt out?
Pardon me?
Is there burnt out?
Is there burnout?
I, I, I don't know how, I don't know how to answer, uh, that. Nothing that, that was really apparent to us on, on the surface, no.
And did you, did you have an opportunity to observe the interface of department heads and/or, um, whoever the, a director may be with the workers vis-à-vis either debriefing meetings or review or procedures, that type of thing?
Yes, we did.
And you were satisfied that that was adequate?
I, I, I think so, yes, yes, it was.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions here. Um, I've done projects, I think, in over forty different jurisdictions and I've found that, uh, cities are organized in typically one of three ways, like we have now, a community development department that either is public works and planning or, uh, public, or, or, excuse me, planning and, uh, building and, or building, planning and public works. And then a, a third type where you would have a, um, an assistant city manager, let's say that's oversees all three departments and has actual line authority, um, over what goes on in those departments. And I was wondering if you could maybe comment on what the advantages and disadvantages of each of those systems are since I think that's, a lot of that's embodied and a lot of what's, you know, spread throughout your report here.
Well, depending upon the personalities and, and how they actually function together, having an assistant city manager oversee the three departments and, and have line authority over, uh, departments really isn't too much different than having what I would call a more traditional community development department. We have a community development director and individual department heads or department managers. Uh, it's, it's a matter of titles is really what it get, what it gets down to. Uh, either of those two methods, uh, provides a, a, well, I'm gonna say a mandated requirement to coordinate and to cooperate between the departments and to coordinate their activities, which is, I think is exceptionally important when you're talking about the development-related and processing, uh, departments. Uh, without that, uh, you traditionally will have the, the three department heads functioning as independent departments within the constraints and, and that they have, uh, within your city and making their own decisions, uh, regardless of what the impact is upon the other departments. Now, I'm not saying that that is necessarily the way it always happens in the city of Newport Beach, I think there's some element of that and I, and we have recommended there needs to be some sort of coordination. I, I personally have been involved in, when I was a full-time city employee in a past life, uh, in setting up, uh, two community development departments and functioning as a community development director, and I found that they functioned quite well. Uh, as a consultant, we've set up that type of process or having a, a assistant city manager oversee the departments probably in five or six, seven other, other cities. Uh, and I, I think that's, that's very important.
Um, the, the wild card in all of this is, uh, is the fire marshal. Um, he kinda sits out here and, uh, and you know, how do you corral those guys, I guess, so to speak? And, uh, it seems like they're constantly competing with the building department over who's, who's really gonna control what have, you know, what, what you end up with in your, in your building. What's your observations or recommendations on, on how we can best deal with that aspect of the equation?
Well, un- unfortunately, having the wild card fire marshal is not an unusual circumstances. I think you, your indications you've run across in, in cities where everybody's not aware of it, the fire de mar- fire marshal and fire code enforces the fire code, I mean, a fire department enforces the fire code, the building department enforces the building code. Generally speaking, they're very close codes, but there's some differences in interpretations and ministry of operations between, between the two. Uh, it, it really takes a very close, uh, sen- uh, development of, of the ability to cooperate between the fire marshal and, and the building department. That's easy to say, it's very difficult to do. I've always been under, uh, operated under the premise of when the push gets to shove on that, the building department then should have the final say on, on things such as exiting and, uh, similar type of things.
Have you seen instances where that's been codified or put into policy so that the conflicts are black and white in terms of how they're resolved?
No, I have not.
We need to see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment. Is anybody else wanna ask another question before we open this up to the podium?
And, and we do have Sharon who wants to give a brief, uh-
Okay.
-presentation.
Do you wanna do it before or after the audience speaks?
Doesn't matter to me.
Why don't we do it before? I mean, I, I think this is a, an important issue to get your feedback on before we come back with recommendations as far as all, all of the issues that you've talked about. And, uh, i- if maybe we don't get to the last item, Wi-Fi, you know, maybe we could carry that over?
Um, first, um, let me just go, go back a little bit to the community development department, the, the coordination. Um, and it wasn't my feeling that with, um, the tradition that we've had in Newport Beach and the, the complex buildings that we have, that, um, a community development department was necessarily the, the best arrangement for us at this time. Um, but I did suggest that an assistant city manager, and I presume that would be this assistant city manager, would take on the coordination role, um, and start working with the three department directors and, um, fire and utilities and general services as needed to start working through these recommendations and bring, um, some more specifics or just get going on implementation of the things like procedure manuals, um, to get us going quickly on getting some of these recommendations implemented. Um, but then the other item that we wanted to talk about was the staffing in the planning department and, uh, Larry Hoagol told you a few times that, um, they have not been able to keep up. In fact, it's at this point twenty-two percent of the time that planning is missing the four-week turnaround on plan check. And if we miss it, it's almost always because planning has missed it. Um, our building permit valuation in Newport Beach has increased by thirty-four percent from two thousand, uh, two thousand and one to, to two thousand and five oh six, uh, and our staffing has just not kept up. The, uh, figure that's shown on the, um, the projector now are, are staffing levels, um, and this shows it since nineteen ninety-one and you can see in blue that current planning, which is, um, the, the group that, uh, reviews things going to the planning commission, has actually gone down a little bit bef- before it raised up again. And then the, um, the zoning administrator and plan check function has, um, increased by, um, a little bit. And in addition to not keeping up with our development review and current planning activity, um, there are a number of things that need to be done in the planning department that, that simply aren't getting done. And I know that we have come to the city council in the past with staffing requests thinking that, that a little bit additional staff we were asking for would help us do those things and we still aren't to the point where we're able to devote staff to things like regular reviews of codes, um, regularly updating informational handouts, doing the procedures manual, a lot of the things that Larry Hoagol was talking about. Um, we still are not able to review our development agreements annually as we should be doing. Um, department administration, doing this kind of a staffing analysis, updating our fees are things that always seem to, to fall to the bottom of the list because, uh, while important, they're not as urgent as keeping up with the, the current planning and the plan check. The, um, this chart shows us the change, um, in the last, um, six years in the, uh, plan checks that the, um, the zoning administrator and plan check function is looking at and the number of reviews. Uh, and you can see in blue that the number of reviews, that's the number of times that the planner actually touches the, the plan, reviews the application, has gone way up even though the number of applications is just up by a little bit. And, um, we think that this is due to, um, a number of, of factors. We have, um, more and more complex projects that take more time to review. Um, people are building bigger houses, they're trying to maximize and get as much as they can, um, on the site while they're keeping the interesting architecture with the way our, uh, height code works now. That means that there, um, are a number of different roof planes that need to be checked individually. Uh, we've gotten more cautious in the past year, few years since being defrauded. Uh, and we're also seeing that because the development industry is busy as well, uh, that incomplete applications are coming in as the, um, design professionals wish to tell their clients that they have the application into the city, we start working on it and find that it's incomplete and so that causes us to have to review it again when it comes in in a more complete fashion. Uh, and the, the staff that we commonly refer to as the plan check staff really has, um, a lot more functions that they're responsible for. Plan check uses up only about forty percent of the total staff time in, in that section. They use about a third of their time on customer service and another twenty percent of their time is on the zoning administrator function and, um, the, uh, staff level approvals. And a number of years ago, we switched quite a few approvals from the planning commission to the staff to, um, increase efficiency and that has done so, but it's still taking up staff.
I added all that up, it's ninety-three percent, so you have a seven percent slush in there. I just wanted to let you-
Used on approvals in concepts-
Nine eighty.
-and council members.
That's talking to council members, is that seven percent, right?
And council member request.
That's Starbucks time. Okay.
Uh, and this, this graph shows how, um, the, the modifications and, and zoning actions have changed over time. The modification permits, uh, have stayed pretty constant, I think they're averaging about a hundred fifteen a year, but the, the staff approvals, the zoning administrator function has really, um, increased significantly, um, by a hundred sixty-five percent. So I think that that is one of the areas that's really eating up the staff time that we keep calling plan check, but it's really doing a lot more than that one function. Uh, and then in the, the current planning section-
How would you identify the difference there on, on that zoning versus, you're talking about actual checking plans for building versus whether it's allowed or-
On, on this, th- this chart is not showing plan check.
No, I mean, well, how would you just identify the di- the difference between the, the zoning and the plan check?
It's plan check for consistency with the zoning code. The building department does plan check for compliance with the building codes, the public works department does plan check for consistency with, um, our city council policies and all the things having to do with, with the public right of way and access there. But these charts are all dealing only with the planning department and in this case for their plan check for consistency with the zoning code. And then this next slide shows not plan check, but the other activities that the staff in that group, um, spend a considerable amount of their time on. And this is showing that those activities have increased significantly over time. And these are, uh, in blue, the modifications permits and in yellow, um, lot line adjustments, condominium conversions, uh, planning director's use permits, those sorts of things. And then finally, this is, um, showing, uh, the increase in the, uh, project complexity and this is for the, the projects that go to the planning commission. So this is the current planning staff who handles the, the more complicated cases. Um, and again, we're seeing complexity, um, increasing, uh, by twice the amount of the number of applications. So that means that in addition to the activity level being high, each individual case takes considerably more time for the planner to, um, work with the, select and work with the environmental consultant, get that environmental review out, coordinate with the other departments, um, distribute the environmental documents, prepare the staff report, attend the planning commission hearing. If there's an appeal or something that carries on to the city council, that's another staff report and another hearing. And we're seeing more and more projects that have a number of applications as part of them. There might be a, a zone change, a general plan amendment, a use permit, a traffic study, um, and some kind of, um, a setback adjustment and each of those portions of the project needs to be analyzed. So we just wanted to, to, um, give the city council some, um, preliminary numbers to indicate how the, the workload has grown and, and how the increase in staff does not seem to have been keeping up with that. Um, and, uh, we're looking for some direction from the city council to look into this in greater detail so we can bring you some specific recommendations.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Curry? Uh, I, first of all, in response to that question, I think it's, it's, uh, very timely and I, and I applaud the both consultants and staff who have done the analysis so far to look at these issues. Uh, as you look towards responding to the points raised by the consultant and then coming back to the council with a recommendation, I think my advice and guidance would be, I'd like to see us establish the objective of reducing processing time, uh, and to imbue a service orientation in the entire planning process. And with those as sort of overriding goals in terms of how we approach this, this job, I would also like to see us get some direct input from the development community in terms of how, uh, we can make, uh, the, the system, uh, better from their perspective and then focus, as Sharon has suggested, on both resource allocation along with technology and facilities. I think one of the things that, uh, this report has clearly shown us is that, uh, as all of us have really known, is that we do in fact need another city hall in order to, or at least a better facility for building and safety and, uh, planning, uh, to effectively meet the needs of our citizens.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Selig?
Yeah, Sharon, the, this, this growth in applications, um, what, what do you attribute it to? I mean, how much of is, is it attributed to, um, additional, let's say complexities, changes we've made to the zoning code and how much to, you know, the annexation of Newport Coast or, I mean, where, where is, where, where is, where is it coming from? And I, and I guess the second part of that question is, uh, you know, what's, what's your feeling on looking at simplifying some of the zoning code in our processes so that we don't have so many applications? You're getting, you're getting rid of some of the stuff that we do. Sometimes you keep adding things over the years to your zoning code and you end up having a bunch of application processes that maybe you don't need.
Don't we have a city council committee that's reviewing the zoning code?
They only met once.
That was overtaken by the general plan in the LCP, it was more than once.
Are you, are you going to have another meeting, Mr. Selig?
(laughing) I'm not the chair- I'm not the chairman.
Oh, okay.
At first, I don't think that it's the annexation of Newport Coast that's contributing to, to the impact on, on the, the workload for current planning. We, we have added some processes to our zoning over time. We've added development plan reviews. We've added site plan reviews. And, you know, if you look at the policies in the updated general plan, it's actually calling for more of that sort of thing as there's more and more emphasis placed on the quality of the development that occurs in Newport Beach and, and not just the quantity. And this is not hard facts. I haven't looked at the numbers specifically to see what kinds of applications they are. But just looking back on my ten years with the city, I recall that initially, the, the Planning Commission agendas would typically have projects that were use permits for restaurants or variances typically for height on a single family home. And now we see much more complicated projects, such as the expansion of Our Lady Queen of Angels, the new Saint Mark Church. Sorry to be focusing on churches, but Saint Andrew's Presbyterian Church, which, you know, some of them have involved general plan amendments, planned community text amendments, use permits, complicated traffic issues associated with them. The Lexus Project was another one that was general plan amendment, zone change, site plan review, traffic study. So I think they're getting more complicated because we're seeing redevelopment of some of the older areas of the city. And that's always more difficult than when you're working in greenfields.
I'd like to see if we can get, see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment on what we've discussed so far and then come back to the council for their recommendations on where we go from here. Anybody in the audience wish to comment? Step forward.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Bill Ficker. I'm with Newport Beach. I, first of all, I'd just like to comment that I think this Hoagland Ireland report is excellent. I think it points out a lot of areas that the city can improve their services. And I think it points out one area that we've all agreed, that our people that service are the nicest people in the world. And I think there are some great opportunities here. Just a couple of areas, about three points that I wanted to make. I think the manager, everybody agrees to do, an expediter manager, whatever it's, it's called, is excellent. I think the five-day work week in some form is excellent because that's what the industry is. Every architect, everybody pouring concrete, whatever, works five days a week. And it's very disruptive to not have a segment of our industry working five days a week. And then, third, I, I'd like, I'll submit something. I've done some work on the electronic submittals and things like that. I think there's some real opportunities there. And somebody, and I think Larry Hoagal brought it up, is that it, maybe one of the council people, that when someone makes a comment on an electronic submittal, it's immediately available to everybody else that's working on that project. And today, consultants are working together around the country, four or five consultants. And it's not that big. The different, I think, ten or fifteen years ago, everybody had a different system, becoming more common, and that people are working on the same systems. I'm certainly not an expert on it, but I see the results of it daily. And there's some great opportunities there, I think, for streamlining and timing things and not have to carry around paper. So I'd sure look hard at that. And I'll pass on some information. And, but I think we're going in the right direction. It's very encouraging. Thank you.
One question, Bill. On five days, is it better to have five days when you have counter open from, say, eight-thirty to four, or five days when you have the counter open from seven-thirty to five, but you have varying different people off on Mondays and Fridays? Which would you prefer?
I, I think most of the people I know and myself would rather see five days of regular work hours, even if, we know that people have to have some private time. They can't be at the counter. But I would think you'd rather have it five days so you know that somebody's going to be there when you, you spend a lot of time trying to figure out what day people are going to be there. And it's very disruptive, I think. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment on this report? Okay, council, what kind of direction do you want to give to staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Selig.
Yeah, I have an opinion.
No. Really. Do you have a point?
How many of us don't have opinions?
I will say this. In, in my career, without exception, and I say, and I don't say that lightly, without exception, the best run, the best managed, the best public service agencies I have dealt with have been those that have had community development departments covering building, planning, and public works. And my only complaint has been there's not enough of them. And you don't, you don't see a lot of them for a variety of reasons. Larry, Larry hit on it a little bit. You know, a lot of times, department directors don't want to give up that department director position. You have to deal with, you know, personalities and, and what have you. But in the end of the day, those are the departments that work the best. And at the end of the day, that's what we're here for, is to give service to people and have those departments work, work efficiently. Now, I don't know whether a community development department is exactly the right thing to do here. I'm certainly strongly in, in support of looking into that and seeing if we can make it happen. But if we don't, I am clearly in, in support, and I hope the rest of you feel this way, that we have a system, that there is line authority over those three departments, that we can get them coordinated and working together. The recommendation that's in the staff report where they talk about the alternative of regular meetings of building, planning, and public works directors to improve coordination, you know, it might work for a year or so, but it won't hold up over the long term. And I think we have an opportunity here to make some fundamental, fundamental structural changes to, to what we have going on here. It's kind of being formulated in a, in a crisis, if you will. But we really have the opportunity to make some fundamental changes. And, you know, I, I urge the city staff and I urge the rest of this council to seriously consider forming a community development department. And if that doesn't work, in a minimum, establish a system where we have clear lines of authority from, you know, assistant city manager position or whatever so that there, that we have the, you know, somebody, somehow, some way that we have coordination and all these departments working together. And it's something that's going to last over the long haul and not just be a year or two reaction to a crisis.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ridgeway. Well, I agree with Mr. Selig. We de facto have that system. It just doesn't work well. And that is, we have three department heads, but there's not good communication or coordination between them. And what ultimately happens, and I know, Ed, you've been there, I've been there, we either call Sharon or the city manager. And the city manager acts as that line item person. And it always ends up being a negotiation. I, I, I think the report, first of all, and I've said this, and I, I hope I make my point to everybody here, we do need another person and maybe, and two persons in the Planning Department. We have for a long time. I think we, we increased the building department, but we didn't increase the planning department. And I think we really seriously need to, to look at that in order to create the inner department coordination that is so required here. The, there is communication, but I'm not sure it's good communication. Mr. Ficker brought up a very good point about electronic messaging. I know at the building department, theirs is very adequate and every, and it's accessible really to the world. And when they make comments on a set of drawings, you can pick them up at your computer at home at midnight or three in the morning or during the day. You don't have to make a phone call. I don't know why there can't be that kind of coordination between public works, building, and, and planning. But I do think a couple of new staffers, I think there's a lot of suggestions in here about the zoning code, about a procedures manual, but intercontinent, or interdepartment, interdepartmental coordination and staffing are really what I see is critical. And I brought up earlier, and I don't know how you do this one, even if there's communications, sometimes there is a disconnect between each one of these disciplines. And I'm not sure, unless you have a community development director who knows all the disciplines well, or a, an assistant city manager who knows all the issues well and can intervene really quickly. And the only other comment, and I didn't want to jump on it when you said it, is the wild card being the fire marshal. My issue there, while I, I again agree with Mr.'s, or Councilmember Selig, is the timeliness of his review. Usually, he comes in at the twelfth hour, or some of these department people come in, some staffer comes in at the twelfth hour. And there's already been substantial changes made to the working drawings at a substantial, a, a, a considerable expense of time and effort. And then a guy comes in and all of a sudden, you have to redraw them. That is patently unfair. It's unfair to the applicant, and he is always the one who suffers. As for the suggestion of talking to the development community, I'd really talked to the engineers and architects. They're the ones that are in here daily. The developers on the larger projects, you didn't mention South Coast Shipyard, but they all have processes. They're very savvy. Quite candidly, they get a lot of attention because they, they are creating wonderful developments for this city. But I, I think I'd coordinate more with the, with the architects, engineers, and some of the other folks out there. But I, I agree with everybody. The Hoagland Ireland report is well done. There's so much in there, it's almost too comprehensive. But generally, the interdepartmental coordination and staffing are, are critical.
Anybody else? Mr. Nichols?
I just had a question of how you really mean to work. Do you, do you mean that you would assign a project to a person to sort of oversee it? Or would you work the other way where it, the project is not assigned to anybody, but it goes out to all departments to be done?
I think that one of the recommendations is that there be a project manager for major projects. I'm not sure that that happens for every project. But the projects that are going to require significant reviews from other departments, there would be at least one person that would act as the go-to person that would try to also create, solve the, the differences between the various different comments. I'd like to comment a little bit on, on this particular report. And what we're talking about here is processing developments. And community development departments, I think, work well at doing that. However, at least in my experience with the public works department, there's only maybe fifteen, possibly twenty percent of the functions that the public works department does that has to do with processing plans related to the various different developments. Their functions are much broader than just the plan checks and, and development reviews. And so while I could support personally a community development department, which includes the planning and, and building departments, I'm not sure that we get the same amount of, of, well, the, the need for including the public works department in there. However, I do agree, there needs to be a significant section of the public works department that will work on a daily basis, trying to make sure that they can do the coordination necessary to take care of the development process. I just feel that, that there are other functions that public works does that are not necessarily directly related to the development review process. Anybody else have any other comments?
I had a question for the city manager. In terms of the twenty percent failure rate of the four-week turnaround that's been cited, is there any reason that we couldn't bring in Larry's firm immediately to try to address that?
We already have someone from that firm.
Okay.
On that aspect, do we have like a, a planning department triage to where-
Triage?
Yeah.
Bring them in by happy.
No, no, no.
You end up, fire department, when they get in a disaster, you say, okay, this one is, is gone. That's it. We don't spend any time there. This one takes fifteen minutes and that one takes an hour and a half. And so we go ahead and do it. But do we have a situation where we can go through and like if somebody is just doing a remodel to where really the only check that has to be made is, is to check to make sure they're not going into the setback areas, to where they can have more or less, almost an over the counter as opposed to somebody that is going to have to look at all the various different heights and wherever, which is a full plan check?
We do that right now.
Okay.
They do very well on that part. The, the smaller ones, they do great.
Okay, just-
The four, the four-week turnaround is just for the initial approval, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
I mean, someone could be tied up for eight to ten months after the initial review.
If, if they have significant corrections, yes.
Yeah. So it's not just the four weeks we're talking about.
If they're not cooperating, yes.
Well, even if they do cooperate, I mean, there's could be several, I mean, even the report indicates that several times there's resubmittals or-
Yes.
Changes that have to be reviewed.
And that's, that's common.
I'm not saying that's common, but I'm just saying, we're not turning things out in four weeks for the majority of, a lot of people.
No, it's, it's the first review.
Yeah.
It's the, Mr. Tabak's took three years.
Okay. You know, it looks like to me from your, from your planning department staffing chart, in nineteen ninety-one, you had eight employees. In nineteen ninety-one, you had eight employees. And in two thousand and five, you have eight and a half employees doing those two functions. So you-
Those two functions.
So you have one, they're shifted around. So in other words, your recommendation is three employees.
I have not made a recommendation on a number.
The report's recommendation. So you're going to come back to us with, with staffing increases?
Yes.
Does the city council have any other specific items that they want us to make sure are incorporated in what the staff comes back to us? I personally think I'd like to see the, the project manager concept looked at.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's one, one of the best ideas in the, in the whole report is, is having that.
Mr. Mayor, there are a lot of recommendations here that we will be taking a look at, some more important than others. But from my perspective, there isn't one single bullet that is going to overnight change our situation. I mean, we, we have staffing issues, we have coordination issues, we have processing issues. I think we also have people working at, at such a, a high level that coordination takes some time. And it takes some time to build up the coordination structure for that to happen. And right now, people are just trying to get work out. And maybe that isn't happening very efficiently. But new people coming into the organization and the departments and having procedures and knowledge for them to follow, so it isn't just seat of the pants. There are a lot of things here that we need to try and put together and coordinate into cohesive processes that give us better time, returns to the customer, and are as customer service oriented as we possibly can. I mean, there, there are certainly some pros to a community development department. There are some strong cons to a community development department applying them to this city. And, you know, we will have that discussion, and I am certainly open-minded. But I just want to caution you that there aren't any silver bullets here. If we do one thing or three things, it's automatically going to make a huge difference.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ridgeway. Yeah, I, I, something I meant to bring up. There's also a disconnect between inspection and, and what's on the drawing. Usually, the inspectors are inspecting only the building code items and are not really inspecting the planning comments. I, I just want to make sure everybody knows that. Because I can tell you, while I complied with the planning requirements on the last couple of years on numerous of my projects, nobody ever checked them in the field, not once. But they did check all my building issues. So there is a connect, disconnect with inspectors vis-à-vis the planning comments.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I don't, I don't expect any magic bullets. I, I'm realistic enough, I've been around long enough that I don't, I don't expect that. And, but I think there's a lot of good recommendations in, in here that we need to follow up on. One thing that I know the planning staff is thinking of, and I'm going to speak positively here, when the general plan is adopted, that they're looking to go in and do a major, major overhaul of the city zoning code. And I think everyone realizes-
I think you should be the chairman of that committee, too.
Who, me? I did it once. Obviously, not a very good job. But, but anyway, I, I think that's something that can go a long way to help- way to help us is that our code is just overly complex, it's been added on to many, many times over the years, and it really does need a major overhaul, and it's, you know, it's going to be an extensive and probably an expensive undertaking, but something that needs to be done.
And I think there's going to be an inertia on the part of some people in the community to keep it complex, because that works for some people.
Keith.
I would not disagree.
Steph, do you, now's your chance to ask us for more guidance in any particular element that you don't feel you have enough guidance on.
Oh, fine, thank you.
Okay. Then our next item is...
Mr. Mayor, we've got, I know we've got some folks in the audience who wanted to talk about the Wi-Fi issue, and because that's on our agenda today, maybe we ought to have that discussion and then have the trails discussion after that if we could.
Does anybody in the audience here to talk about the trail?
Yeah.
Yeah, the trails.
People for both.
How many people are here for the trail?
Well, we could continue the Wi-Fi issue.
And how many are here for the Wi-Fi? I think we got about four to one.
Mr. Mayor, I think we could go at 10 after, I'd hesitate to go any later than 10 after 6:00.
Let's do the trail first since it seems to be the simplest.
I borrow your clicker, Sharon.
Dave, you asked a question, where should the Back Bay Loop Road go, and by definition it's a loop.
There's a key aspect of it. I really want some direction on it. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is a chance for you and the community at home to get familiar with a concept that has been proposed to the city called the Back Bay Loop Trail. I'm going to just show you like four slides of pictures rather than presenting the whole concept, because that's in your staff report. Basically, it's roughly an eight-mile trail using existing roads and trails, but it's designating it with a specific name and signage, that's the key new idea here. So let me go through that. This is the upper part of the proposed trail. You can see where it goes around the, from, if, starting here at roughly Fletcher Jones, comes down through the Upper Newport Bay Nature Preserve, then down this way. On this side, it hugs East Bluff, Jamboree, and then Back Bay Drive, and I couldn't fit it all in one slide, so. On this side, it goes, it's proposed to go along Santiago and then Galaxy, then come down behind lower, upper Castaways and the park, come across the bridge at PCH in Dover, come around behind the dunes, and then back up to Back Bay Drive. And again, all of these roads and trails are there today. The difference would be this signage which follows. This type of small pole signage which would go on either individual new poles or existing poles, say if there was a speed limit sign up there, for instance. This is what it would look like, have that kind of graphics with an arrow pointing folks in the general direction. And then there's also the concept of pavement marking where signage, pi is not appropriate, and this is the concept for pavement marking.
Do you have like any striking on the hard surface? Is that not necessary?
Not, it's not proposed to do an actual lane.
Dave, a question.
Yes, Mr.?
Could you identify the user of this, or in other words, we're not talking about horses, if we're talking about all those city streets, I would guess, right? We're talking about...
That's correct, not horses.
Primarily than bikers and...
Bicyclists, rather than motorcyclists.
Now walkers, would they take this trail, or would they want to be closer to the bay?
I think if you're a walker like Mayor Webb, an eight-mile trail would be fine. I would think generally the most popular use of the entire loop would be for runners and bicyclists. And it's not, as Councilmember Daigle will know, it's not a place for competitive cycling. You can't barrel down these trails quickly.
Unless a ride.
True.
But Dave, I think there would be a lot of walkers for different segments of this.
Yes.
If you add it all together, there would be a lot of walkers.
Correct. I think there would be, people would choose a component of it just as they do today. But specifically on cyclists, it's...
So we're not talking about high speed though, because you can't have both the walkers and the cyclists trying to make time on this thing.
Just as you can't today, you're right. Because remember, these are cyclists and hikers and runners use this today.
So we're looking more like guys with the heavy tire bikes rather than...
Exactly. It's a, as Mayor Webb is saying, it's a recreational trail more for leisurely activity.
Now, do we see families on these? I'm just trying to get a little...
I'm going to recognize Mike O'Connell with Irvine Ranch Land Reserve Trust here to address that, but certainly that is the goal, to hopefully attract local families and show them a good route to enjoy fitness and enjoy the Back Bay. It's, I don't think you're going to get a big draw of people from outside the area. If they don't know about it now, they won't know about it later, but I do think families...
But this would be hooked up to the rest of the Irvine trails, so, I mean, it could have a significant distance that it...
It could, but it's hooked up today. Most of the designation of, I'm going to go back a slide, for the so-called Mountains to the Sea Trail zips up here and goes all throughout the watershed, and this officially is a leg of the Mountains to the Sea Trail.
On the Back Bay, you're saying?
On Back Bay Drive, right.
David, I see that we go through the dunes and the bay shores and some other communities. Have the property owners been, have opportunity to discuss this, and have they reached an opinion about having the trail go through their property, or does it go through their property, I guess is a better question.
No, it doesn't go through anybody, it doesn't go through bay shores, it goes, it goes along the existing trails in front of Castaways. It follows Santiago Drive, it goes along Galaxy up to Santiago Drive again. At Irvine, it actually follows the existing trail that goes through the nature preserve around to Jamboree Road, and then East Bluff, following existing trails again, all the way to Back Bay Drive, so that as far as communities are concerned...
Even the ones through the dunes are already existing.
Yeah, that's an existing trail.
Yeah, this is actually behind the dunes and fenced off on both sides.
Okay.
If you get to that point.
That's the beauty of this trail, that one there behind the dunes, that doesn't get to use that much because it's paved so much.
It doesn't, right. Dave, to answer, let me answer Councilmember Curry's question quickly. We did, I did sit down with Anders Volkadall from Dover Shores, provided him with the plans. I let him know the meeting would be tonight, I haven't heard back from him. I did meet with a couple of members of the PBNR, their trail subcommittee, and so they're familiar with it. That's been the extent of my outreach, I've been uncomfortable doing any more before I talk to you about it.
Dave, on the sign, why does it say Orange County and not, oh, that one says Newport Beach.
Do you have one in there that says Orange County? Oh, that's a, okay. Mike, you want to come up? Yeah, speak at the mic, otherwise. Mike at the mic.
Thanks. The reason it says Orange County is there actually is one part of the trail that goes through property owned by Orange County. I'm Mike O'Connell, I'm the executive director of the Irvine Ranch Land Reserve Trust, and we are offering to pay for this trail. The area that we're looking at right now, the, essentially the West Bay, the nature preserve, that's actually County of Orange property. It would mostly be stencils, and it would say Orange County there, the rest of it would be signed as Newport Beach.
Even though it's incorporated Newport Beach?
That's correct. It's, unfortunately, it's owned by the County of Orange, so...
Are you able to move on that if we requested it all be Newport Beach?
I think we could talk with them about that, yeah.
Yeah, we should do that.
The Newport dunes is actually also owned by the County of Orange, even though it's the same situation, so. A couple of notes about the signage, one is it's, the pole signs are aluminum signs, they're the same material that is used on the Mountains to Sea Trail that you all may be familiar with. We've had very good luck with the durability of those signs, and the stencils have actually held up remarkably well. They, they're just as good as the day we put them down on the Mountains to Sea Trail. So to touch on what we were talking about earlier, this would then be an eight-mile loop that interconnects into about a 30-mile signed and themed trail as well, the Mountains to Sea Trail.
I think you need to get a civil engineer involved, because I believe it's closer to 10 miles.
Is it 10? We haven't actually been and measured it, although our director of planning, John Graves, who many of you may know, has been out and walked it and has identified a number of sign locations. I would want to point out one thing that, just to correct my friend Dave here, I actually don't live in Newport Beach, I live in Mission Viejo, but this is my family's very favorite loop to go on. Ever since our kids were little, we had those little trailer bikes that you attached to your bike, and my son used to drag along behind us, and we would get lost on the west side without any signage until we figured out which direction to go. We would get up to Castaways and get up to about right here, and have no idea where we were going. And so the notion is, and we would always run into people in this neighborhood that were kind of doing the same thing, but were a little lost, and in fact, the idea is that by putting some signage here, you not only get up to Galaxy Park, which is one of the best views of the bay, but you get people out of that neighborhood more quickly also.
I would suggest that in those areas that you use existing streetlight poles rather than trying to install an additional sign post.
Absolutely. In fact, I've got some photographs, if you'd like to see, of the proposed sign locations, and mostly in that neighborhood it would be stencils. The stencils would go adjacent to fire hydrants, so they would never be blocked by a car, or at least without the car getting a ticket.
Mike, I have a question for you.
Yes.
In terms of a recognizable name, almost a branding of sorts, that you'd have this identity, do you see opportunities or suggestions to kind of then rally people, maybe volunteers that would assist with trail maintenance? I mean, how do you see this all connecting together?
Absolutely. What the Irvine Ranch Land Reserve Trust does is brings together volunteers in other capacity to manage the trails and open spaces throughout central and coastal Orange County. This is one where we would actually offer to maintain some of this ourselves for the first few years that it was there, but I would see it being incorporated into the whole Back Bay management system of trails and habitats, and volunteers taking over the management of it eventually.
Dave, anybody else have any other questions?
I have a question for Michael.
Sure.
What would be your response if some group wanted to use this trail for a bike race or a run, you know, some kind of special event? Is that something that maybe through policy should be discouraged?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, these trails are available to anybody, they wouldn't be owned by us in any way, shape, or form. It's essentially theming something, as Dave said, that already exists, so it might be kind of fun, actually. In fact, if it's 10 miles, like Mayor Webb says, to do an annual 10-mile footrace or something, that might be kind of fun. So I would see that being a possibility. It would entirely depend on what the city wanted to do.
And I guess my concern is, when you have a group of competitors, and you're, they're running into a family of four people taking a walk, I mean, you know...
Right, right. It would obviously have to be very carefully managed if something like that happened.
Homer back in the 1970s, I know that's a long time ago, but they used to have the Round the Bay in May run, which every May, and that went on for four or five years, maybe even longer. I even participated twice. And that was before we had the trail where they, through the, I think we used Mesa Drive up in that, at that timeframe instead of the trail we have today.
Right. Anybody else have any other questions?
There's a triathlon somewhere I can see.
Probably so. One more note that I would make for you, which is that it's a very easy installation, and so once you're ready to proceed, we can have that done and then have a really nice dedication as part of the whole package, and it can be done very quickly.
Is there any long-term commitment that the city's making, though, to keep the trail by using your funds or...
Well, I would assume that the trail would belong to you all, and we could make a commitment to do some of the maintenance early on, especially as it was...
No, no, I'm saying, let's say, for whatever reason, we decided we didn't like the signage of the trail.
Oh, oh, oh.
10 years from now.
No, I wouldn't, yeah.
Or five years from now.
Wouldn't think so, it would be the city's trail.
Thank you.
We would be just the donor of it.
Any other guidance?
One other question. I assume that as part of the trail system that you currently have, that you publish things that show trails, and so you would be adding this trail to your maps and things like that?
Absolutely, and we would look forward to working with you all to sort of jointly publicize things like that. Part of what the Irvine Ranch Land Reserve Trust does is, we call it connecting people to the land, and so any opportunities like this, we spend a lot of time promoting, so it would be a great chance to show off the resources that you have here at the Upper Newport Bay.
Thank you. Keith, anybody else in the public, I comment on this? Do you need to have any specific recommendations from us, Dave?
Well, I didn't hear from you any specific concerns about this proposed route, and that was my big issue with you.
I think that my concern would be is that we need to at least try, I realize there are no organized community associations on that side of the bay, but some way or another we need to try to put together a notification so that they don't see this.
I'll pull that together, thank you.
Isn't there enough flexibility too, that you kind of can move things around if you've got a problem?
If we had a problem, yes. So we'll do the outreach to see if we can not have a problem.
I think you've got a wonderful partner, and it seems to me that that's the way we ought to try and handle it until you reach an impasse.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next item is wireless facility, Wi-Fi network. Wi-Fi? Okay, who's going to do that one?
Me again.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, maybe take the lights again. Thank you, Mr. Curry. This is a discussion you would have this afternoon and then potentially this evening, if you're comfortable, you'd take the, you'd authorize us to issue a request proposal, request for proposals associated with a community-wide Wi-Fi network, and I'm going to briefly go through this. We're going to cover how this came to be, some requests for wireless internet access and how people get that today, what is Wi-Fi, proposed request for proposals, what happens next, and how people can get more information. I do want to address some things in this hopefully brief presentation about concerns or issues that have been raised since I issued the staff report, and some of those folks are here today to articulate those as well. So why wireless? A Wi-Fi network allows residents, people, residents and people who work here and visitors to have their office follow them wherever they go, because people tend to expect that. And today, of course, you can access the internet from hardwired facilities like your cable modems or DSL or dial-up, from limited and cell phone providers, some of your BlackBerrys, for instance, can get that, and then at hotspots. These are places like City Hall where you can sit with your laptop and log on to a network, and including Starbucks and the public library. This is kind of how Wi-Fi works, it's a basic diagram of what Mountain View is using with their Google-sponsored system, where you have, this is for instance, a municipal building, and these are antennas on top of downtown buildings, and this is a person with their laptop sitting in the park potentially and just connecting on wirelessly to that antenna, so that it does involve fixed components, of course, as well as fixed components throughout the town to allow that mesh of connectivity to occur. There's a RFP, or Request for Proposals, proposed to be issued tonight, if you agree to that, and this would invite vendors from the outside to propose the development of this community-wide network. It would, it could be, or would be, constructed entirely by the vendor at no city cost and funded entirely through the vendor's billings for subscription and access time. It could also be funded by advertising revenue, there are some models out there like that, and the concept would be, we would allow this to be installed on city streetlights. And here in Newport Beach, we own about 95 percent of our streetlights, and that's unusual for communities in Orange County. Southern California Edison owns most lights in most cities.
Dave, one of my concerns, I'm not sure what the latest agreement looks like, is that that franchise not be exclusive in the sense that other telecommunications providers would also have access to those streetlights for wide services.
Thank you, and that issue was raised after the staff report was issued, and that's the next slide. So the first issue raised is the one that Councilmember Daigle mentioned, exclusivity. We talked to, at Robin's request, we talked to Bill Marticarena of Britann and Tucker. He advises against authorizing an exclusive right for these reasons. Thought maybe an under-capitalized company might come in and accept, and win the bid, and because they're under-capitalized, may not be able to deliver the product, and Bill says it's not that, not worth that risk to lock up our streetlights potentially in litigation. And Bill knows of no reason to actually grant exclusivity. I want to back up a tiny bit, I went with the exclusivity model because that's what Anaheim was doing, and we, Councilmember Curry and Councilmember Daigle and I went to Anaheim and interviewed the folks there, and they seemed to think that was a good model for them, but Bill says it's probably not the best model. And then Bill points out that the marketplace plus most legislation at the state and federal level is going towards more open access, so this would be contrary to that. Any questions about this? I'll move to the next concern raised.
Just, so you would buy, you'd have to buy into the system to use it, or I don't understand.
That's, that's how it would work, Councilmember Nichols, you could sit with your laptop, you could potentially have a unlimited subscription to say EarthLink, and EarthLink would know you're accessing the Wi-Fi network and would allow you unlimited use, for instance, for $18 a month. Or another model is to, you could pay per minute or per 15-minute increment that you use it.
But supposing I'm on Verizon or, we don't have Adelphia right now, but...
Most of the models would allow you to use that Wi-Fi system again at a new fee, even if you didn't, you could, you're just, you're just logging on to the internet.
So how would I know that we...
So, how would I know that, that we even have that as a user?
I'm, I'm sorry. Say that again.
This isn't what I do for a living, but supposing I wanted to use my portable in, in the park or wherever. First of all, so I think you've got a system. How do I locate that? Or, I mean, okay, so I start up my computer and...
Yeah, your new laptop would, would have a, an ability to tell you that there is a wireless facility in the area and it can talk to it. And then you would decide to talk to it, and then depending on your subscription, you would immediately log on and either be billed at a per-minute rate potentially, or if you, if you subscribe to the monthly system. But again, your computer can recognize that it's in an area.
So, it would recognize that.
That's right.
Wherever I am, a different one maybe.
That's right. For instance, this one here recognizes now, it is telling me that there's a wireless internet connectivity right now.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Continuing on about concerns about the RFP, there are a number of folks, some in the audience, that suggested that, that this presumption in the RFP that the city won't invest any dollars would scare away some of the smaller providers. And their suggestion was to at least keep the door open within the RFP to say that maybe the city would assist either with some facility construction, or maybe a better model is to provide some use of or access to existing wireless infrastructure, such as we're doing some wireless facilities of the lifeguard towers, or, and/or city buildings, et cetera, in addition to the city's streetlights. Where, where we have wireless infrastructure up, it could be part of the net, the network. Public Library, again, is another example. So, that was a third, second concern. Final concern, the police department raised this, and they raised it fairly quietly. They just said that, they know this is the technology of the future, but they have concerns that wireless inevitably allows people to log on virtually anywhere and potentially act in a predatory way. And because of the nature of wireless, and this is well above my head, so forgive me, they cannot as, track as easily who it was that was accessing that specific site or doing that kind of predatory activity because of the way that it's, the date, the connection is scrambled by the provider. Related information, this can happen today, obviously, at the public library, at Starbucks, and that PD's suggestion was, let's just ask within the request for proposals that the proposer include the latest technology and security. So, with that, if you authorize us to issue the RFP tonight, we will do that. And the concept is to return these by the close of October, and then the Media and Communications Committee would look at it and then offer a recommendation to you as to a specific firm or firms proceed differently or to stop the process. And Ms. Clausen has a wrinkled eyebrow looking at me with a question.
Well, I guess the other alternative would be to issue a RFP with directions on how it might be amended, because it's my understanding that Bill Marty Carina said that there are other cities that have put out RFPs and have programs that might be better suited to the cities that we should look at with regards to RFPs. So, the other thing that I also want to make sure that in processing this, that we make sure that we look at our existing system for issuing permits to use our poles, because we have lease agreements or rental agreements for the use of those poles from various cellular companies now, and we need to be able to treat all light companies alike. So, if we go out for an RFP, I think there's going to need to be some way of showing some sort of income to the city that equals the amount of, of income that we might get from cellular provider for the same use of that. So, there's some other issues that, that I've talked with Dave about, and I think Bill Marty Carina brought up. So, if the council's interested in us pursuing this, my suggestion would be to give directions or our concerns about the RFP that was attached, and maybe have staff go back and look at some amendments or changes to the RFP directed towards the concerns or the directions we get from the council.
And we have to remember that our streetlights do have a capacity that they can't be overloaded.
Yes.
Eventually, if you get too much up there, they blow over and causes problems.
Point well taken.
Okay.
I'm done.
Are there any specific questions before we open this to the public? Anybody wish to comment? Come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Staff. May I borrow this? My name is David Mitchell. I'm with Pro 911 Systems, which is a 35-year-old company located out of Laguna Beach, and we provide advanced communication support to 26 agencies serving over 46 cities throughout California. And one of the things that we have done is built the wireless mesh network in Laguna Beach two years ago, and the wireless mesh network in Newport Harbor 18 months ago, which has been operating for 18 months and was covered in the Orange County Register's full-page article last July 3rd, a year ago, July 3rd. This is live video from the shoreline observation system that we're under contract to deploy for the Newport Beach lifeguards. This is one of five cameras with five more going in. On Thursday, we installed the first traffic camera, working with the city's traffic department and the Newport Beach lifeguard at Jamboree and Pacific Coast Highway. Now, Pro 911 Systems also built the mesh network in Crystal Cove, California, working for the California State Parks Department. That is for K through 12 live broadcasts. We also work with the Orange County Sheriff, protecting secure facilities, and we're designing the wireless network for Little Tokyo under contract from the California Redevelopment Agency in Los Angeles. The point being is that we are the largest integrator of mesh networks in Southern California. We've worked for 18 months with the city of Newport Beach with many of your departments, the IS Department with Newport Beach, with the lifeguards. And we, in Laguna Beach, participated by providing the wireless internet access that they used for the sexual predator sting. So, just as wireless networks can be used by bad guys, they can be used by good guys to catch the bad guys. As such, we've worked Laguna Beach in all areas. The city council chamber in Laguna Beach had one of the wireless mesh units. Do you have that there, Michelle? One of the units was installed in city council chambers last week in Laguna Beach, where we have ongoing relationships with all departments in Laguna Beach. And as such, Pro 911 Systems is very interested in providing support and information for this RFP process, because over the years, we've supported all these wireless internet service providers. We provided the live video feeds for the manufacturer, for EarthLink, to do their demos to the Pasadena Police Department in Anaheim. We've also sold equipment to various other agencies, and basically, we're doing the design work in LA. We tend to work on the city's side doing design work. And the two specific suggestions that I've made to David here is that, number one, you include in the RFP the option for the city to develop and purchase some of the network, since you're already buying it for the lifeguards. That way, it ensures interoperability and also creates the ability for you to attract medium and smaller internet service providers like Cheetah, like Laguna Broadcasting Network, and three or four others that I'm aware of. The network we're designing in Little Tokyo is designed to have multiple internet service providers operating. Since the city owns some of the pipe, they can then share it to multiple internet service providers. That means you, for instance, would be able to have a choice of internet service providers with different services and rates, and in Little Tokyo, they want to have a free service that's maybe lower performance, that the first thing comes up is all the community news and information. So, the second suggestion I have for the RFP is that it include video webcasting capability. In Laguna Beach, we built the Laguna World News, and that provides live video from the city council chambers for anyone, anywhere in the world, wired or wireless, and it also provides recording of community events. And in Little Tokyo, they did live webcasts of their tofu festival, which attracts 30,000 people, and we're going to be putting up an instant network on October 7th in LA for the big music festival at the Disney Center and Pershing Square and such. So, what I'm suggesting is that the city pursue this, knowing there's already a wireless internet service provider that's been available in the harbor area for a year and a half, knowing that you have a lot of assets and capabilities, and knowing that if you write the RFP correctly, you can get multiple bids and maybe have higher franchise fees, since you'd own some of the network, than if you only had an RFP where the city put no capital in. Because if you put no capital in, there's only one service provider that can really afford to do it, and that's EarthLink. If you have the city willing to contribute the building of the network to some extent, then you have the option of attracting two, three, maybe four qualified service providers that don't have the deep pockets that EarthLink does, but do have years of operational experience providing community service on the internet. Thanks very much.
Dave, you, you and I spoke about this, and we met, and I appreciate, by the way, your comments and thoughts on this.
Sure.
What is your estimate as to the amount of capital expense the city would incur following your advice in this regard?
My suggestion would be to build a sparse network over the city that would include two to three of these units per square mile, so that that way, the capital investment of the city is somewhere between 75 and $120,000. That is sufficient that any city vehicle outfitted with the mobile version of this unit would be able to access the network for emergency communications, public safety, fire, police, lifeguard, city planning, the ability for inspectors in the field to immediately enter field reports when they do inspections on, on, you know, developing properties and construction. Then, the internet service providers would be invited to come in and expand the network where their market was, knowing there was enough of a base that they would be able to capture the homes and businesses around where the city had located its units. So, generally, what we try to do is design a network that meets the city's needs, but then allows the internet service provider to expand it at their expense, but still provide enough units to provide some potential for commercial use of the network. Think of it as a big water main in the sky with 16 pipes in it. You can have 16 different things going on inside that, which means you could have two or three service providers, all the city facilities separately and securely done. So, it's like having 16 pipes in one. Did that answer your question?
Just a question. What are we looking at? Is that one of your cameras with the antenna system on it, or?
This, this is the little wireless unit. There's 25 of them. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. This is one of the 25 units in town that do the wireless part. I have a camera in my car, but I don't have a camera with me.
So, that's your antenna in the field, so to speak.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
And, and the box you relatively keep with it? I mean, so if that were going high up on a lamp, you'd put the whole, the whole works up on the lamp and just run some kind of power to it?
Yes. And if you'd like, I have a 50-second news clip from Channel 2 News showing what was done with Newport Beach lifeguard that shows all of this. Would the council like to take the time to see that? I can put that right up on the screen.
Makes sense.
Then, then basically picture worth a thousand words here. This is from last October, Ann Martin on CBS Channel 2 News. And I'll try to turn off the mute, because I muted this so it wouldn't disturb anyone, okay? And put the microphone in the speakers.
It is the first of its kind anywhere in the country. Newport Beach tonight is being watched by virtual lifeguards, cameras, actually, set up to monitor what's happening at the beach in the off-season. If there's an emergency or somebody's doing something they're not supposed to be doing, a lifeguard at headquarters will send out a patrol unit.
We were able to dispatch the medics immediately without any communication from the lifeguard at the tower, which would have delayed the paramedic response another three or four minutes, which can mean the difference of life and death.
Well, they're saying this is working so well, they're installing another camera. The lifeguards, of course, will be back during the busy season.
If I'm out there in the riptide, I'm going to be yelling, "Step on it, yeah!"
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Come on up. We've got five minutes.
Hi, my name is Chip Allswead, and I'm with Schubert Flint Public Affairs, and we're working with EarthLink, apparently the big pocketed, deep-pocketed group trying to buy everything. But I can assure you that we don't have as much deep pockets as, as one may suggest. Wanted to let you know that, from EarthLink's perspective, and we did get an opportunity to meet with a couple of members of the city council, Councilman Curry, Councilmember Dagel, we are looking forward to this process and working with the city, providing the networks that you need. To give you an idea of what we've done in previous cities, both Philadelphia and Anaheim, as well as some of the smaller cities around that we're working with, we typically deploy in the area of 36 of those, of the radios. Ours look a little different, just a different company that makes them, per square mile. Two to three is probably sufficient for the bandwidth for a, for city needs, but when you put on top of the city needs, every single resident or a large number of residents, obviously, just like if you remember when dial-up started, if too many people were calling in, you got really slow speeds. Same kind of thing happens, just on a bigger level. That's what we've been able to do in the past, and that's what we've found works really well in cities like Philadelphia and Anaheim. We're, obviously, EarthLink's proposal is that they put the network up and work with the city to use city assets in order to make sure the system works well, whether that be your own fiber or, obviously, in your case, the light poles, which is a godsend in developing one of these things compared to the rest of the cities in Orange County. So, just wanted to let you know that we are here. We're looking forward to working with you on this and, and working with this RFP in whatever form you put it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? You're the only one left.
I'm Charlie Smith, and I'm a partner in Seven Seas Systems. And we have worked with David over the past couple of years in putting up this idea of saving lives at the beach with the wireless cameras for the lifeguard. I've been working actually on that for about five, six years, and worked back with Tim Riley when he was in charge, and now Eric Bauer, of course, is in charge. And the system is working perfectly for them, so much so that they're putting up additional wireless cameras. And I'd just like to read a, a couple of paragraphs out of our attack on the market. Seven Seas Systems' purpose is to market products naturally tuned to and allied with the existing Seven Seas wireless internet system already in place in Newport Harbor and beach areas. That is David's system that he told you about. Revenues will be generated from the following main market arenas: wireless camera systems for yachts, subscription revenue from wireless internet users, and internet advertising sales. So, what I'm saying is that this becomes a far-reaching thing, because there are so many aspects to the user. Our original target market actually was the 9,500 yachts we have in the harbor, and they have to be wireless if they want to be on the internet. But they also want to be able to have cameras that they can use at night in the dark, so they can, we have night vision cameras that can spot debris out in the ocean. So, save trouble that way. And if they're having a party on their yacht, we can broadcast that party back to Cleveland, Ohio, so that Aunt Bertha can see the party. Okay? So, they're, now, we're also going to put a camera on the ferry. And what is more Newport Beach than seeing a ferry ride and a shot at the beach? Hello. We've got 8 million visitors per year that bring their laptops. They want to get on the internet. Okay? And we attract them by showing them Newport Beach throughout the world, live. And we're already doing it, folks. It's not pie in the sky. We're doing it right now with the lifeguards. So, we are a proven system. We're not a chit-chat, gee whiz, if we did this type thing. We're real, and we're doing it very nicely. Ask Eric Bauer. He'll tell you. There's a lot more to it, but I know we're short on time, and we hope that we can work with the city on this RFP. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, comments from the council?
Just briefly, because I know we're rushed for time, this will come up on the, on the agenda. I'm very excited about this technology, because it really allows us to liberate people from specific hotspots and allow people to use their laptops anyplace in the city, which will be a tremendous benefit both for residents and for visitors. It will also allow us to introduce more efficiencies, as we heard in the previous discussion, with our departments in terms of being able to access records, make changes, file reports from the field. I do think the RFP probably needs a little bit of work, and maybe the appropriate thing to do when it comes up on the agenda is to continue it for two weeks, to allow David to work with the, some of the... to work with the, some of the provider community and to address the issues certainly that the police department has raised. But I think we ought to be moving forward with this RFP. I think it's very exciting. I also think it should be an RFP that's designed to generate maximum competition among private industry and not written specifically for the business objectives of any particular group, whether they be large or small, who are potential respondents. But I think this is going to be a great move towards bringing the city into the technology age.
Anybody else? And I would like to thank everybody that's showed up. Either public comments on anything else that's not on their agenda so far? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to this closed session.